Good evening, welcome to our regular Board of Directors meeting. It's May 27th, 5:31 PM. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Student Rep. Nivea PV has our land acknowledgement.
Evergreen Public Schools resides on the traditional lands of the Chinookan peoples and the Cowalts tribe. They have lived on and cared for this land and its waterways since time immemorial. We thank them for their stewardship and make this acknowledgement to open a space of recognition, inclusion, and respect for all Indigenous students, families, and staff in our community.
Thank you. First item on our agenda is to adopt the agenda. Is there a motion?
I move to adopt tonight's agenda.
Second?
Director Boconegra moves to adopt the agenda, seconded by Director Wilson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is our superintendent report. Dr. Maloney.
Alright, thank you very much. It is definitely a very busy time of year in our schools with many of end-of-the-year celebrations, performances, and events happening across our district from grades K through 12. I had the opportunity to tour the District Visual Arts Show at the Fristenberg Center last week and was very, very impressed with our student artists and their work. I've attended concerts this year and know the end-of-the-year concerts are always great experiences for our students and families, and there have been several drama productions this year as well. We should be very proud of our fine and performing arts offerings, our instructors and our students. With that, I'd like to share a little bit, a high-level overview of a school's master schedule building process. It's important to remember that elective classes are offered at each of our high schools based on student interests. We have an ebb and a flow to the number of classes schools are able to offer, and it's but, and again, it's based on expressed student interest that's found in the forecasting data that's gathered each year in each one of our high schools. Beginning in February, students express their interest in coursework for the following year during something that's called forecasting, which is a survey of interest administered to each student. With a limited staff budget that's based on student enrollment, and our enrollment has been declining, building administrators have to decide what courses to offer based on the number of students who are showing interest in particular courses. In the recent past, there has been a sharp decline in the number of students expressing interest in theater/drama during forecasting, and some principals have combined courses into one class in order to keep the department in place. I know that several people and students out there are very passionate about the drama and theater program, and they have signed up tonight to make some public comment. And I do want to share that we are very eager to continue offering drama along with all fine and performing arts classes, as long as there is enough strong student interest in those courses so that we can offer them. Again, the decrease in theater/drama classes is not a result of a district cut or a program cut. It's a direct result of decrease in number of students who are interested in taking the drama theater class as a credit-bearing course during the school day. The forecasting process is very important to building administrators. Again, there must be enough student interest in a course for us to fund the staffing and offer the course. As a district, we face significant budget constraints, and several classes across multiple areas have been impacted for next year. Wildlife biology, AP physics, and business and marketing offerings, web development, sports as literature, film as literature, and coding with algebra are among some of those. Like theater, these are courses that inspire passion in our students and offer valuable, sometimes life-shaping lessons and opportunities. Unfortunately, we simply don't have enough resources to run every class when the numbers don't support it. The elective offerings at a high school can be quite fluid and change from year to year. Courses offered in the College and Career in Technology Education, or CCTE, program provides us with an example at Mountain View High School, where digital arts was once a large program. However, recently, there is less student interest in digital arts, and yet the floral design program is growing because of strong student interest. Likewise, Heritage has seen growth in their advanced digital art classes while their entry-level courses in the same program are declining. As stewards of tech dollars, we have to make wise decisions in how staffing is allocated. Principals and their teams make tough decisions in what to offer, and it starts with student interest. Student interest, along with graduation requirements, drives the courses we offer to staff and we offer to our, or we offer, or we're able to staff and offer to our students. However, I do want to point out that theater club and productions continues to be offered after-school at all four of our comprehensive high schools. So I just wanted to provide an overview again of how elective courses are built into the master schedule. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is public comments. Any community member wishing to address the board may do so during the designated time on the agenda for public comments. Comments are to be directed to the Board of Directors as a whole and may not be addressed to any individual member of the board, the administrative staff, or the audience. Although the board will not engage in dialogue, the board chair may ask a speaker a clarifying question or follow-up at a later time on an issue raised during public comment. Each speaker has a maximum of three minutes this evening to ensure we hear from as many voices as possible. First person on our list is Deana Alt.
Good evening.
Good evening. Can you hear me? Okay. Hi, my name is Deana Alt, and I'm a parent of two students that have grown up in this district. Both are now in high school, and one's graduating in a couple of weeks. You know, I know you've already heard some stories a couple of weeks ago, and you're about to hear more, about how the students and the parents have grown and their experiences of having drama classes. But today, I mean, I have that same story, but today I'm going to really focus on using the lens, my own lens. My lens as an educator, a former administrator, a family, I mean, not a family, excuse me, a community partner, and an advocate for children and young adults. So we were told one day, and it was very upsetting, that, by the way, all theater classes have now been cut. But it's okay, we're going to have the production. And I thought, well, okay, I should be really excited, right? That we have the production? The problem is, the production is just the end result. The classes that have been cut, that is actually the process in which students learn everything they need to do to put on the production. It teaches the foundation of not only acting, but working as a team. And it's how they learn skills to become a crew and an acting force. The production is just merely the final project. The term paper, the final exam, if you will, a time to show what they have learned. You know, research, the US Department of Education did some research, and one of the things that they found, or several things, is that students that are involved in drama education have better school attendance. They have more engagement in-school and out-of-school activities. They have higher graduation rates, and they score higher on SAT scores. And many of them go off to college and become leaders in their jobs in their future because of the skills that they learn in the class. In fact, I've met many professionals in our community, business owners, that talk really fondly of their time in drama and how the skills they learned helped them be successful adults. It's through the drama classes that they learn tangible and soft skills, and helps them to navigate the world during high school and after. These students are dedicated, developing strong work ethics and learning to be responsible and take accountability. But there's more. They learn job skills, they learn tools, they build things, they create, they work together as a team. Some are leaders, they learn how to be leaders. They also learn how to be followers in their team, communicate together. And did I mention that how their self-confidence just exudes from them? You can see it and you can feel it, the pride they have in the product, the production, that started in the classroom.
Thank you.
I want to say my final comment. Please be a part of the solution to help us bring back drama classes to Heritage High School. Please help us protect the process, because drama classes provide so much more than acting.
Thank you. Dane Ford. Actually, uh...Nana Gani. Did I get your name right?
Huh?
Your name?
Uh, Nana, but I'm going to be introducing myself anyways. Alright. Hello, my name is Hanana Bargani, and I'm a senior at Heritage High School. I have been in theater classes since my freshman year, the same year I began having medical issues arise. I was barely at school, barely making it to classes, and I was in pain and fatigued all the time. Sometimes, all I could do to motivate myself to keep pushing forward, to keep going to school, was that I just had to make it to my sixth-period class, my tech theater class. I'd be okay if I just made it to that class. I did as much as I could with my pain to move sets around for the children's plays, and when second semester rolled around, I was in my acting class, where I met my best friend in the world. That class saved my freshman year, and me. I didn't have theater classes in sophomore year, and I felt that absence. I missed it. I didn't get the class for whatever reason, and I remember that I regretted it. I wanted to be in that class, I wanted to help out, I wanted to participate, but was too nervous to try out for the plays, and I just, I wanted to be a part of that environment. Come junior year, I was in that class again, and this time musical theater. Suddenly, I was being asked to take part in the class project, production of Frog Prince. Despite being scared, I auditioned, and I got the lead. I remember Mr. J telling me that I could do anything, even memorize my lines and even perform. So I memorized my lines and dang it, I performed. I never would have auditioned for the big play that spring without that class. I wouldn't have found it something I'm so passionate about, good at, enjoy, without this class. That class gave me something more precious than a second home or confidence. It felt like it returned my sense of self, a sense that I had lost when, or at least I'd felt like I had lost when my pain began. It felt like the little girl who loved to take center stage and entertain and be loud and proud and silly, that little girl who spent four years in pain and tired. I saw her again. Best of all, people got to meet her. This class has done so much for me in my healing journey. It's not just a class, but experiences that positively change people's lives. Protect Heritage Theater classes. Thank you.
Thank you. Dane Ford.
Hello? Hi. Can you hear me right?
Yeah.
Alright. My name is Dane Ford, and I wrote a little, something on why I, theater is important to me. Joining theater has been the best thing in this school, in my opinion, for me. But not just for me, but for many other students. Theater is born just putting on a show. It teaches confidence, communication, teamwork, and empathy, skills that are essential no matter what career path someone takes. In an age where collaboration and creativity are more valuable than ever, cutting theater sends the message that these qualities just don't matter as much. For many students, theater is a safe place, a place to express themselves, to belong and to grow. It gives a voice to the quiet, a platform for the passionate, and a second home for those who might not have one. Removing theater isn't just cutting a class, it's closing a door on opportunity, expression, and inclusion. As a graduating senior, I don't ask this for myself, but rather for everyone behind me, the students who have the value of high school days ahead of them. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Tristan Moore. Trislin Moore. Okay, thank you. Corinne Robertson.
Uh, hello?
Hello.
Uh, phew. My name's Corinne Robertson, I'm a sophomore at Heritage, and I'm here to talk about the drama class. I joined theater last year, and in that time, it helped me become more of a confident person. Last year, I would have, like, completely given up on participating in school if it wasn't for this program. The people in this class mean so much to me, and I would hate for anyone to miss out on, on an experience like this. Reading scripts here in drama really helped me with my memorization skills, and lastly, I'd like to say that I'm, like, obviously a very anxious person, and theater really helped me, like, put myself out there and try to be better at public speaking. It helped me ask questions when I felt like I needed to, and it helped me make new friendships that I wouldn't have had if it wasn't for this class. I wouldn't have ever met so many wonderful people if it wasn't for theater, and I would have never had the courage to go up here and talk if it wasn't for this class. But now with a bunch of these wonderful people lifting me up and supporting me, I can finally feel okay doing something like this. Uh, thank you.
Thank you. Caleb Williams. Hello?
Hey, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Cool. So, I'd like to start off by saying that I have not taken a theater class at Heritage, but I was involved in both of the plays this year. And when I got there, and I showed up to rehearsal for the first time after I got cast, it was one of the best experiences of my life. I met so many people right off the bat that I really just loved to be around. Like, I made so many fantastic friends, and I was really looking forward to taking the theater classes, because I figured, well, I met a lot of people doing this, I didn't get to participate in one of the school's productions, because it was in a theater class, it was in a drama class, and I didn't know that. And it really got me excited for high school in general. And then when I walked into, I think it was a set strike, I came in, and I was met with one of the saddest things I've probably ever heard when it relates to school, and that was that the theater classes that I wanted to participate in were being cut. And a lot of other freshmen that I knew were also actually really excited. A lot of them didn't get around to it for forecasting, I was busy, I couldn't recruit as many people as I could after my fair lady. But I was so sad to hear that a lot of my friends who were genuinely excited, like my buddy Blake, for example, he's a big sports guy, he's a, you know, he's got a good reputation around school, but he was really excited to do theater. He's not someone you would ever expect to join, but he was totally planning on it, and he was totally planning on taking the class with me. And it was almost kind of hard to find out, like, wow, I'm, don't, I might not ever get this experience again. And by the time I'm gone, theater might still not have come back to Heritage. And that really hurt my soul. I don't come to things like this very often, this isn't really, I like public speaking, but this is not my deal, but I really felt so passionate about missing the people that I wanted to be around and not being able to experience as much of theater as I really, really wanted to, and dig into the art form as much as I wished I could, that I decided I was going to show up and speak, just to show you guys how passionate so many people are. I think if even five people signed up, which obviously there are a lot more, but I think if even just a small, tiny, little, itty-bitty fraction of Heritage signed up to be in theater, they should absolutely get the chance. It was one of the greatest experiences of my life. It improved the way that I thought about other people, but not only that, it improved me as a person. It improved the way I viewed the world around me, it improved my singing, my footwork for boxing, it improved my carpentry skills, and for all I know, could pave the way to something greater. And I really think you guys should consider bringing the class back, and I think it's a disservice to every single student at Heritage that it's not. Thank you.
Thank you. Kylie Ponos. Hello?
Hello. My name is Kylie Ponos, I'm a sophomore at Heritage High School. I feel connected to the school, and I feel wanted because of theater at Heritage. Theater is such a huge part of my life and is so important to me. This program has brought so much whimsy to so many lives. I found a family in our community, and I feel welcome whenever I step into the classroom. This class is a safe place for students of every background. These classes are an integral part of putting on the productions that the public enjoys so much, whether the production is extracurricular or not. A student trying out the class is a student more likely to try out for the tech crew or a role in the play. Theater has given me so much, and a lot of what I've gained can be applied to real-life scenarios. My confidence has been boosted, last year I wouldn't even raise my hand in class if I needed help. This year, I led my class in a performance in another language. I learned skills like public speaking, memorization, leadership, communication, how to use a drill, how to handle myself when situations turn unexpected, and managing myself with a deadline. I learned how to project my voice, use my empathy, articulation when I speak, and countless other skills. Recently, I had a mock interview for a school project. I was thoroughly unprepared, but I got 100%. I hit every mark I was supposed to, and I didn't know how to answer the questions the interviewer asked. Without theater, I wouldn't have been able to do that. When I was writing this, someone told me to speak from the heart on why I want drama classes back in my school. My first thought was to talk about how theater has affected the people around me. I have a friend who's absolutely in love with theater. Every time I see him in the classroom or on the stage, he has that innocent twinkle of joy in his eyes of just being in the theater atmosphere. I know a girl who thrives in the drama program. I mean, she's so talented, and I would really hope she can pursue theater all four of her high school years and grow her skills even further. I'd love to see what she can do with more training. At the beginning of this year, I met a guy who I had a hand in convincing him to join theater. From the second he started, anyone can see that he loved being there. He wrote a note to me recently saying that he's glad he met me, which brought so many tears to my eyes. Without theater, none of these awesome people would have a chance to further their skills or make these meaningful connections. These connections and skills and moments are the reason I'm talking right now, because I believe that everyone should get to experience them. I believe that everyone should get to find a community as amazing as the one I found. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mitchell Garson. Hello?
Hello. My name is Mitch Garrison, and I am the theater teacher and director at Mountain View High School. I'm here tonight to advocate for something that often gets overlooked in public education, and that's theater arts. We are currently witnessing a troubling trend where theater is being phased out of this district one class at a time. Last year, all four of our district's comprehensive high schools offered theater classes during the school day. These classes include beginning theater, advanced theater, theater as literature, technical theater, and musical theater production. Next year, only two of our high schools will be offering theater classes. Evergreen and Heritage, our two most economically disadvantaged schools, are losing all of their theater classes next year, and at Mountain View, we're going from two classes down to just one. That's one class period for nearly 50 students with a wide range of experience. I'm lucky to work with building administration, who support the arts and see the value that theater brings to our students and our school culture. But at the district level, theater receives very little recognition or support. Union, Heritage, Evergreen, and Mountain View each produce three major productions every year, but they are rarely acknowledged. In fact, we hold one district theater festival yearly, and we cannot get the district video production team to film it. One of my fellow theater teachers is losing her theater program and being displaced next year, and we haven't heard a word from anyone at the district about it. All of this sends a clear message, that theater education doesn't matter, and that theater teachers and students are expendable. But it does matter. We matter, and we deserve better. Frankly, my students put in too many hours and worked too hard to be overlooked time and time again. Theater is not just an add-on, it's a necessity. Research tells us that theater helps students grow with empathy, collaboration, confidence, and critical thinking. It gives a voice to students who often feel invisible. For some, it's the reason they show up to school. And isn't that what we want? The district says that we want students to feel seen, heard, and empowered, and theater checks all of those boxes. My theater program is run completely by Mountain View Theater alumni, myself included, who are here because of the immense impact that theater made on us when we were in school. Theater provides a space for students to belong, and we need that now more than ever. We are watching theater programs vanish, and that should concern all of us. When these programs get cut, we don't just lose a subject, but we lose student belonging, creativity, and community. We need district leadership that values all arts and not just some. We need to be advocated for and protected the same way that the district's music programs are, and we need commitment at the district level to rebuild theater programs and make sure that every student at every school has access to theater arts education. Thank you.
Thank you. Owen Gunter. Hello?
Hello, everyone. My name is Owen, and I'm a junior from Mountain View High School. I'm speaking today on behalf of not only Mountain View, but every school and their theater programs throughout the district. I come before you with the intentions of offering a student's perspective on high school and how theater changed my high school career for the better. As a freshman, I had a lot to look up to. My sister was an outstanding student, 4.0 GPA, nearly perfect academics, and my parents had just the same expectations for me. Ironically though, for me, school was much more about the socialization than the learning. While I did prioritize my learning over the socialization, it was a place to get away from home and to get, be around students my age. Right away into the year, my freshman year, I was a part of the band, an amazing community of people with a drive to make music as best they can, sorry. They welcomed me into the world of high school with open arms, just as I was by robotics, tennis, and then DECA. And these filled my schedule, but in a lot of cases, they did not fully fill my social expectations. Near the end of the year, after all was said and done, I was asked by some, by one of my friends, and they essentially demanded that I audition for the next year's fall musical. I was ecstatic at the idea, but very nervous when it came to actually auditioning, and after some convincing, I stepped into the theater classroom after school and was met with hundreds of students. You should see that classroom. All of those students were eager to try something new, and I, of course, didn't end up getting anything in the musical, because I was just a freshman, but something magical did happen after that. I was invited to a birthday party, me, a freshman, by someone who didn't even know me. Except, it wasn't just me, it was every single person who even tried auditioning. It was there that I realized that it wasn't just some club or some class, it was a family that cared, a family that even through drama, still came together and included every single person. I don't think I would have continued theater without that summer party. And I, something that I realize now is that I hadn't have, had been invited to a party for nearly a year until that point, and for someone with more of a social generator than a social battery, it was a realization that took me aback. It wasn't until junior year when I hit a wall throughout high school, well, sparing the details for the public. I was in a rough place, a really rough place, the kind of place where you can't bring yourself to seek out help. When every other community let me sit in that place, I was pulled out by friends in theater, sometimes more literally than metaphorically to get out of that headspace, but it meant something. That embrace, that, that connection to those people is something that every kid needs now more than ever with the apparent suicide rates increasing throughout schools. The welcome, the aid, the kind of people that don't just see you for what you play or build or how you compete, but who you are, and nowhere else is it more evident than in theater. Thank you.
Thank you. Cameron Hurst. Hello?
Hello. Members of the school board, parents, teachers, and fellow students, my name is Kami, and I'm here as a passionate advocate for our theater program, a program that is not just an extracurricular activity, but an important part of our school's community and personal growth. First, theater is a safe space from the pressures of school. It offers a comfortable space where we can express ourselves, work together, and develop people skills. In our increasingly digital world, the importance of face-to-face communication and teamwork can't be overlooked. The theater program strengthens these abilities preparing us for life. Playing different characters teaches us empathy as we step into the shoes of our characters, understanding their lives and their struggles and their stories. We learn to understand and portray emotions that are not our own, building deep understanding and compassion for others. Through theater, I've learned to take on leadership roles, gain confidence, and build resilience. Performing on stage boosts self-confidence, teaching voice modulation, body language, and eye contact, fighting stage fright. Feedback is another important part of theater. Learning to accept constructive criticism gracefully and Learning to accept constructive criticism gracefully and using it to improve builds resilience. These skills, leadership confidence, and resilience that we learn in theater can have a lasting impact, preparing us for future and personal and professional challenges. Theater goes beyond the stage shaping individuals who can lead, express themselves, and handle conflict and constructive criticism. Every performance is a chance to accept that while perfection isn't always realistic, improvement is. Unlike band and orchestra, where students follow a conductor and sheet music, theater involves multiple elements: costume, makeup, lights, sound, stage crew, and set design. It's about memorization, presentation, and collaboration in a way that is unique to the performing arts. Lastly, we've seen other schools face cuts in their programs, and theater programs are at risk of being cut, and it's crucial that we advocate for them. We must stand together to protect this essential element of our education and culture. Our theater program is a cherished tradition, families gather to watch performances, and younger siblings get inspired to follow in their footsteps. I want my little brother, a future actor, to experience the joy and growth that theater offers. In closing, I urge you to recognize the great value of the theater program. It's not merely a performance, it's a lesson in life skills, collaboration, and personal growth. It's a tradition worth preserving for future generations and for my brother. Thank you for considering not just the present, but the future of students and community.
Thank you.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Kenzie. I'm a junior at Mountain View High School, and I've been doing theater for as long as I can remember. I've explored many things such as robotics, HOSA, and choir, but theater has remained my one constant, especially during high school. Research consistently shows that students involved in theater tend to earn higher GPAs and are less likely to drop out. Along with this research, I speak from experience. As a sophomore, I made the decision to not participate in one of our season's productions, Piven. Unexpectedly, this decision correlated heavily with my scholarly performance during my second semester, as I had lost motivation to attend school, let alone excel in my academics. This was an unusual change for me, considering I've only ever known myself to have a 4.0, which brings me back to my point, that theater is many students' motivation to get through the school day and further improve in their academic performance as well. Safe to say, now that I've gotten back into my preferred routine, I haven't struggled with my grades since. Moreover, theater is a place in which people are encouraged to truly express themselves, something that is rarely found in any other program. This welcoming attitude teaches students of all backgrounds to be authentically their own people, all while creating acceptance and belonging amongst the community. As a result of students' security and self-expression, their susceptibility to peer pressure decreases. This is especially critical in high school, where peer pressure can lead to serious outcomes like bullying, substance use, and even mental health struggles. All of this to say, the more confident a student is in their own self, the less susceptible they are to inevitable peer pressure. And programs such as theater continually strengthen students' self-expression, giving them the appropriate tools to resist social pressures. The skills students develop in theater don't stop at high school, they extend into college, careers, and real-world environments. With each production, students are required to work with one another to create a successful show. Whether that be a cast or crew member, everyone is as valuable to the community as the next person. The responsibility essentially falling on the team pushes them to adapt to any complications throughout the process, as well as improve cooperation among their peers, both of which are incredibly useful skills to acquire for life after high school. In conclusion, along with the social benefits that result from theater education, long-lasting benefits of the program include improved academic performance, resistance to external pressures, and progressive workforce skills, to name a few. With all of this in mind, I urge you to maintain strong support to all theater programs in our district, as it is not only an extracurricular, but an essential aspect to high school education and beyond. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello.
Hello. My name is Silas, and I am a sophomore at Mountain View High School. I've always been a performer, either it's been, you know, performing for my family at Christmas parties or on the stage. Ever since I can remember, I always felt like I never belonged, or I was never a part of something that it was until I started attending Mountain View and joined the theater program. Theater is the one thing that makes me want to go to school, that encourages me to get good grades and take good classes, even AP classes. I am not one to intentionally put hard work in until I started doing theater and I was pushed to. Without theater, I would probably be failing and not going to school. Of course, the performances are a huge deal, but it's the theater class that got me introduced to those performances and got me introduced to all of my friends, and everybody that loves and support me now are in those classes. Theater is also a great place to learn how to handle real-life scenarios like last-minute changes, getting rejected for a job, and learning how to accept that and be better and to apply for a next job, adapt to a different environment. It's also helped me build my personality. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello.
Sorry. My name is Oliver Ryan Arnott. I'm a junior at Mountain View High School, and I've always had an unexplainable love and passion for acting and theater. Through all of the arts, theater gives kids a space where they can express their emotions and love that other arts don't offer. When I look around in my theater community, I see so many kids whose only extracurricular is theater. This may not sound significant, but without theater, so many of these kids wouldn't have a single connection to their school's community. As an incoming senior, I know that when I reflect on my high school experience, I will truly only be able to reflect on my time in theater. All the love that I hold for Mountain View is rooted in my career in theater. What I will miss when I leave is my love for theater. Without it, there will be a large lack in school spirit and experiences rooted within schools at all. I can't stand to see the lack of appreciation towards this district's theater programs, and I'm so scared that children in the future will be held back from experiencing the love and passion that I witness every day in theater. I don't want to be a lucky generation of high schoolers that got to experience theater. I want generations to come to be able to experience the life that I get to live. That's all.
Thank you. Hello.
Hello. My name is Natalie Miller, and I'm a freshman at Mountain View High School. In recent years, we have seen a decline in funding for theater programs across the district, which saddens me, and here's why. My first introduction to school theater programs was through my brother. Seeing his joy and light onstage inspired me to join. In my past year in theater, I have been happier than ever. Theater is a space for me and many others in our program to be our true selves. We are united in one common goal. Theater has made me friends with so many people that I probably would have never met if I hadn't joined. When I am at theater, I feel appreciated, loved, and that people actually want me there. Theater also gives a chance for students to connect with other students from other schools as well. Due to theater, I have gained good-worth ethic, flexibility in new situations, and good-people skills. Theater gives students a chance to step onstage and show the audience who they are as a performer. I hope that our district recognizes the value of theater programs and the positive impact they have on students' lives. By investing in these programs, we can ensure that future generations have the same opportunities to grow, express themselves, and build meaningful connections. Theater is not just an art form, it is a vital community that fosters creativity, confidence, and collaboration. Let's work together to keep this essential part of our school experience alive for everyone. Thank you for considering the importance of theater programs in our schools.
Thank you. Hello.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. My name is Riley Markle, and I'm a senior for Mountain View High School. Tonight, I'm here to speak to you about something that I've always held close to my heart, and that's theater arts. I've had the privilege of stage managing for Mountain View's theater program for the past three years, and I plan to pursue technical theater as well as theater education throughout college and beyond. Tonight, I stand before you not just as a student of the arts, but as a representative of countless other students like myself, whose education and lives have not only been shaped, but enriched and empowered by theater programs across the district. There's a growing narrative in education that places an emphasis on standardized test scores and measurable outcomes, and while that is undeniably important, I urge you to take into account what is lost when the importance of arts education, but especially theater arts, is overlooked. Oftentimes, theater classes are treated as a luxury or just another extracurricular. Hold on one second. But in reality, they are far from that. Theater is a community unlike any other that fosters growth and real-life skills such as accountability, collaboration, and emotional intelligence, to name a few. Aside from that, never in my personal or academic life have I found such a profound and genuinely accepting community. Theater has always been a place for people of all identities, backgrounds, and abilities to call home. It's not just about performing, it's about belonging. There are few communities where raw, unconditional support exists. In theater, support and success is collective. We share everything from responsibility to failures to triumph. We laugh together and we cry together, and I think anyone can attest to the fact that that kind of environment is not just rare in high school, but rare in life. To discard theater classes is to silence the voices, stifle the growth, and outright close the door on students across the district who are looking for a place to fit in and figure out who they are, free of judgment. So I leave you with this. When students such as myself, my peers, and those who came before me, such as yourselves, look back on our high school experiences, will we remember the test scores and standardized core classes, or will we remember the teachers and friends that believed in us, the moments that sparked newfound passions, and the communities that made us feel seen? For myself and so many others, that community will always be theater. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Aiden Cox. Oh, I touched the computer, I'm so sorry. My name is Aiden Cox. I will be graduating in a few days from Mountain View High School with eight semesters of theater classes, 12 productions, and hundreds of rehearsal hours under my belt. If it wasn't already clear, theater has been an incredibly significant part of my high school experience and an unparalleled outlet for creative expression throughout my life. So I'm concerned to hear from peers and friends at Evergreen and Heritage that they will no longer offer theater classes. It feels as though theater is treated like an afterthought in this district, degrading such a monumental piece of so many students' lives to insignificance. I worry about the future of the community that has brought so much joy and opportunity to my life and countless others. I performed my first musical at Mountain View when I was eight years old, and this past weekend, a decade later, we just closed my final high school production. When I look back, I recognize the immense impact theater has had on my cognitive and emotional development. Working in such close proximity with so much interaction with other students, I gained and advanced so many vital skills, such as peaceful and mature conflict resolution, how to communicate my emotions and boundaries, and essential teamwork. Working under a director enhanced my ability to follow instructions while also sparking my creativity in bringing their vision to life through my unique interpretation of the character. Performing live hones quick problem-solving skills and helps students build confidence in public speaking and self-expression within a supportive environment. But more importantly, theater provides students with a welcoming and non-discriminatory environment where their creativity and originality can flourish. I stand now with confidence in myself and my own character and identity that I would never have found without my high school's theater arts program. I witness every day how students who otherwise struggle to find social courage thrive in theater. Even more personal to me, I see how my younger siblings are empowered and supported by the theater community at Mountain View. I'm deeply troubled by the trend I'm seeing. Representation for theater arts remains dwindling, stripping away a beautiful and unique outlet for students to express their creativity and find their identity. It should be made clear that theater is not a hobby or an expendable elective, it is an indivisible community full of students that deserve recognition, representation, and the opportunity to thrive. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Hi, my name is Emma Charet. I am a junior at Mountain View High School, and I participate in the school's theater program. Over the past few years, I have noticed a decline in funding for the performing arts. This makes me worry about the future for all the theater programs in the district. Theater has given me and hundreds of other students in the district a place to belong. Seeing the decline in funding for the performing arts, I'm incredibly worried for those students that will lose their place. I joined theater in eighth grade. I joined because I had an interest in performing, and I wanted to lose my stage fright. I never expected theater to change my life as much as it has. I'm more confident, I have the motivation to attend school, I've made lifelong friendships, and I've found the path that I want to pursue after high school. I have a place to belong in school because of theater, and the memories I've made there will stick with me for the rest of my life. To think that this opportunity could not exist for students makes me incredibly sad. If I didn't join theater, I wouldn't be as happy as I am now. Theater isn't just an after-school activity, it has become home for many students where we can learn, grow, and have fun. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Dee. I am the parent of a junior at Evergreen High School and two EHS graduates. I've been a part of the Evergreen Public Schools community for over 10 years as a parent, volunteer, and paraeducator. I'm grateful for the opportunities this district has given my family, and I've seen firsthand the impact of EPS core values: equity, belonging, college and career readiness. But the recent decision to remove theater classes from Evergreen and Heritage High Schools tells a very different story. Yes, the after-school program still exists, but cutting theater as an elective course removes vital educational opportunities, especially for students who dream of careers in theater arts. It gives a competitive edge to the students at Mountain View, Union, and other districts. That's not equity. In-class theater instruction offers depth: dramatic technique, physical training like dance and stage combat, and study across genres and eras. The after-school program? Students get one role, one style, one production. It's like learning to drive just one car instead of learning to drive any vehicle. My daughter, for example, needs a Shakespearean monologue for college auditions. She won't get that kind of preparation outside of class. So by removing these elective classes, we're denying support for college and career readiness to some while continuing to offer it to others. That is not equitable support. We were told that only 17 students forecasted for theater, but many said they were told by counselors not to register yet. EHS students conducted a poll and gathered 52 names of students who would have signed up. Decisions made on incomplete data? That's not equity. We want a recount. As a paraeducator, I've seen students blossom through theater, especially shy or isolated students. They found confidence, friendships, a place to belong, a reason to show up and shine. They became leaders, they found their voices, they fought anxiety and depression with community and purpose. Without these classes, some students may never discover who they are or where they belong. From what I've seen, equity, opportunity, and support for success seem reserved for students at the more affluent schools. That is not what this district claims to stand for. I urge you, please reconsider. Restore theater classes. Invest in the voices, futures, and well-being of all our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Catherine Furtick? Hello?
Good evening. My name is Catherine Furtick. I have had three children graduate, graduate through our district with one senior. I'm here tonight speaking further on our theater classes. There's a pattern of cutting the classes, then the curricular program altogether, with beginning theater first, which is a prereq for any further advanced classes. Once you remove a prereq class, you eliminate what qualifies a student for other theater classes translation. We don't have enough numbers or interest in that. Hmm. So many students in both middle and high school reported being told by their counselors to wait to forecast for theater classes, which predictably creates not enough interest or numbers. EHS spent the 24, 25 school year with no theater classes at all, with only an extracurricular program consisting of two productions. This means that any student that plans to go into theater for college and professionally will be unable to study in classes. With, while the productions are great learning experiences in terms of responsibility and leadership, the classes are for technique, which is crucial for kids applying to theater school. Classes in theater tech provide the basis of working knowledge, which can then be applied to further study and employment opportunities, including our district tech positions for students. What happens to those as we lose so many learning opportunities for our students? How is this an equitable opportunity for theater education? There are clear links between involvement in performing arts and graduation, future success, as well as protection from bullying from minority groups. There is no other art that will teach our kids how to communicate, collaborate, and negotiate like theater. Theater classes historically have a higher proportion of students with IEPs and 504 plans, a number that has grown exponentially post-COVID. Where do those kids go now? Where do they find safety, security, belonging? We lament the chaos inside our schools while cutting away the safe, calm spaces within them. This defies logic and the very goals of connection, community, and belonging that our district says it prioritizes. So let's talk about belonging. Do we ask our students how they rate it as a number but skirt the elephant in their room as to what contributes to their response? Do we actually ask them how losing their librarians, theater classes, and equitable opportunities has impacted them? Do we ask what keeps them coming to school, what keeps them from dropping out? Do you know what it feels like to have your child ask you daily, "What would happen if I dropped out?" Have you experienced a child's deepest lows with mental health? Where you and they wonder, "Are we going to get to graduation? Will we even have a future?" It's not hyperbole to say theater classes and caring, dedicated teachers have saved lives. My child, like so many, struggled immensely during COVID with her mental health. Our district has a high proportion of low-income families. Cutting theater classes not only looks inequitable, it creates the idea that the arts belong only to those who can afford them. We need to preserve and prioritize equitable opportunities for the arts for all of our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Dana Tob?
Hello?
Hello. Good evening, Board and Superintendent Maloney. I can echo so many things, but I want to just recapture the, um, the forecasting concerns. A student, they had open house, they brought a bunch of middle schoolers into Heritage High School, and they got a list of people that were really excited to join, and they thought they were going to have those students come into class, and they were ready to receive them because they got them excited about talking to them at the open house. Well, it's not going to happen now. So that balloon was popped for those students that were excited about attending a drama class at Heritage. I would like to ask that you guys re-forecast. I would love to see you put a survey out to the whole entire district, make sure parents, parent square, kids are involved. Just get a yes or no. Check the temperature again. It would be really nice to see across the district. I'd like to see those numbers. Because I'm hearing, wait to forecast, we might not have it. You know, I'm, I'm, these rumors are buzzing, so I would hope that you would look into that. Again, we're talking about belonging, connection to the schools and the communities. I'm hearing so many kids that are hitting my hearts tonight about belonging, about wanting to go to school. I know what it was like. I didn't like high school either. I, I found community when my friend took me to the drama class. Okay, I, I was able to do a monologue. You know, again, I grew out of taking a one-semester drama class. I can attribute that. I wanted to ask you guys to reflect on an experience in your school time period, and I remember reflecting with my mom. It was maybe a, a project that we did, but it took us all the way through the process of several different things, and we got to show that production, we got to show and tell, we got to, whatever age it was, that you got to present something to the community and how good that felt. And I hope you got a chance to present something to more than just your teacher or your classmates, that your parents did get to see something. That makes a difference in our lives. That's what I remember, third-grade class. I, I mean, out of 12 years, I remember a third-grade class project. The one teacher, the one student, the one change. We always say that, right? I'm a teacher. We always want just one student in our lifetime, one student that we can change. How many kids in here have been changed? It's a lot more than one. These drama teachers, they're putting so much into these kids, so much trust, so much belief that they're coming out stronger and better than us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Lori Tob?
Hello?
Hey, good evening, members of the school board. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to speak today. I know there's a lot of us, and you're hearing the same thing a lot of times. I would like to talk to you about the value of offering drama as literature as an English class and how it differs from a regular English course. Traditional English classes tend to focus on prose, novels, essays, and short stories. Students learn through written assignments, essays, and standardized assessments. Students study character, theme, literary devices, and largely through reading and class discussions. Drama as literature, on the other hand, is English with life. Drama takes words off of a page and breathes into them. Students still study character, theme, literary devices, but they also study themselves. We study through performance, direction, introspection, and embodying the material. The plays in my class we worked on this year, Macbeth, Twelfth Night, Alice in Wonderland, The Glass Menagerie, and A Streetcar Named Desire, were not just read, they were lived in our class. We learned how to become the characters we read, how to relate our feelings to theirs and how to relate their feelings to our own. Acting is an entirely new level of analysis, putting the character into yourself and yourself into the character. I know when I'm tasked with analyzing a traditional novel in my normal English class now, I begin to approach it as if I were to perform it, and I have good grades in English. Plays present the world through dialogue and movement and action. We have to discover what our characters are thinking. We discover how to analyze text in an entirely new way. The structure of drama as literature values performance and presentation, but there's always space given for the timid and the loud. Every person is encouraged to read aloud in class, perform a scene, get feedback, and try again. We learn how to memorize and feel pride in ourselves for finding our character. Theater is all about working for a final product, working to find what a playwright wants for their characters and for their world, and finding that in yourself. We performed two one-act plays in our drama as literature class this year, Macbeth and Alice in Wonderland. I watched freshmen go from having no interest to building costumes, sets, memorizing lines, and learning to fall in love with the process. When we perform, it feels so rewarding, more than a book report ever could. We get to perform in front of hundreds of children from our school district. The way that motivates you is hard to describe if you've never experienced it. And even for the person who would never put themselves in the position to perform, they still give it a shot. Trying is the most valued part of this class. This isn't about removing traditional English, it's about the choice, allowing students to see English through an entirely new perspective. Traditional English tells you how to read the world, but drama as literature teaches you how to walk in it. Thank you for your time and for considering how we can make literature more alive for our students. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comment for tonight. The next item on our agenda is our board consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
I move adoption of the board consent agenda as presented.
Second. Director Perkins moves that we adopt the consent agenda as presented, seconded by Director Boa Negra, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. Next is our superintendent consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the superintendent consent agenda.
Second.
Director Boa Negra moves that we approve the superintendent consent agenda as presented, seconded by Director Perkins, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. The next item on our agenda is our student board representative report.
Good evening, President Weatherspoon and Directors of the Board. Tonight, I'll be sharing the board report with Jonathan Ramirez, a senior from Henry Delax High School. First, we would like to share all the great things the Student Advisory Council has done this year. During the 2024-2025 academic year, the Student Advisory Group met eight times in total with a consistent attendance of 10 to 15 students. The group represented a diverse range of perspectives, and each meeting provided valuable insights into the student experience. The conversations were thoughtful and solution-oriented. Some topics we talked about over the year were belonging and student connection. Students discussed what helped them feel connected to their school communities, highlighted the importance of inclusive spaces, strong adult relationships, and equitable access to activities and support. Next, the cellphone policy. Over the course of three meetings, students provided detailed feedback on the district's cellphone policy. They balanced the need for academic focus with a recognition of technology's role in communication and safety. Student support services. Students shared feedback on the visibility and accessibility of student support services, noting a desire for better awareness and more proactive outreach.
In terms of our discussion about support for multilingual, or otherwise ML, learners, the group voiced support for stronger, more individualized services for multilingual learners with attention to language access and cultural inclusion in our classrooms. In regards to the superintendent search, the group was proud to provide input during the superintendent search process and actively participated in candidate interviews, helping ensure student voice was included in leadership decisions. And lastly, equity and inclusionary practices. Equity was a thread throughout every discussion. Students emphasized the importance of anti-racist practices, LGBTQ plus inclusion, and support for students of all backgrounds and identities.
Now, looking ahead for next year's reps, I recommend including more voices from sports activities such as dance teams, softball, gymnastics, and more, as well as student-led clubs like BSU, Black Student Union, ASU, Asian Student Union, Latino Clubs, GSA, Gay Shire Alliance, and more. These groups continue to contribute significantly to students' cultures and should have some time to shine. Additionally, students expressed interest in having more opportunities to discuss school events like prom, sports or games, and sports activities. For example, assemblies and in-classroom activities. Whether that's sharing their experience or explaining their vision for it, they are all essential, essential parts of student experience and deeply connect our school. To wrap up, I would just like to state it has been an absolute privilege and joy to work in this, with this incredible group of people, within the Student Advisory Council, the Board of Directors, and all the amazing people within ASC and the district. Their commitment, honesty, and vision for a better school experience have been inspiring. I'm deeply thankful for the time, energy, and thoughtfulness they have brought to each meeting. I found a very, this to be a very valuable, very valuable lesson. With this being my last year in Evergreen, I'm moving on to the University of Portland and staying in the district as, as I'll be coaching at dance next year at Heritage. One thing I've learned from this experience is that even behind the scenes, the district is constantly working with students to hear their voices. So thank you. Do you have any questions?
Well, congratulations on the dance job and going to University, University of Portland?
Yes.
Excellent. You did a fantastic job this school year. I think both of you, for your input, we had some really heavy topics throughout the school year, and I know that one of the first meetings, you tackled attendance. And, you know, thinking back throughout the school year, we had a report on attendance where a lot of our schools are doing much better overall. The percentages are increasing at, we've had a night of recognition for some of our schools that were like top performers. So the input that you give and that the students will continue to give, and I love your idea about reaching out to more of the student groups, is fantastic. So, Nave, I just want to thank you for all of your work. You were a blessing to work with, so thank you. We'll see you next year on Student Advisory. You're going to apply? You're a junior?
I'm a senior.
You're a senior? Okay. Well, then we'll see both of you at graduation.
Yes.
We were going to do this later, but it was a pleasure to work with you this year, and thank you very much for all the time and effort and hard work you put into this. Lori has a basket for you, which I think we can give to her now. Yeah. Congratulations on being accepted to college. Congratulations on the job at Heritage. I'm really proud to know that you're going to continue on working with the district and good luck at. What are you going to study at University of Portland?
Um, elementary education.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. Good job, baby.
The next item on our agendas are teaching and learning and equity update.
There it is. Good evening, President Weatherspoon, members of the board. For the teaching, learning, and equity update this evening, we will continue to focus on data that we can use to inform decision-making. And so Director of Student Equity and Family Engagement, Dr. Jamila Singleton, will be sharing student feedback data from the survey tool called Youth Truth. And Research and Assessment Coordinator Nathan Lee will bring you results from the focused interim assessment block for mathematics, which was administered earlier this spring. Dr. Singleton?
Hello. I'm emotional because I'm definitely proud of how our student leaders have done work this year. So, um, thank you for that. So I'm here to talk about Youth Truth. And so first, I just want to say Youth Truth provides insight for us into student perceptions of belonging, relationships, school culture, and engagement. And we've prioritized some questions, there's probably dozens of questions, but we've prioritized a handful for our district improvement, so I'm going to report out on that. So this presentation will also have disaggregated data, so you can see by race, and we've also included LGBTQ as we are continuing to focus on their experience across elementary, middle, and high school levels. So I'll start first with belonging. So belonging for each, success for all. We're making some progress here, and we definitely have seen statistically significant growth. And so you'll see those gold arrows, which represent 3% or more, and then green, which is 1% to 2%. Equal means no change. And in a couple slides, you'll see some red for where we've seen declines. So high school belonging held steady at 42% overall, with small gains over time. We've seen statistically significant growth for our students in high school who are Black, Latina, Latinx, and then Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander. You'll also see that as NHPI. So our Black and Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander middle school students are also seeing growth with belonging. So we're really excited about the fact that the work that's been happening So, we're really excited about the fact that the work that's been happening to develop our student voice and leadership is making a difference. And I apologize if there are any errors. There might be some arrows. I'm looking right there. It says 41% between those, and it's actually only a 2% growth, and I still have some errors. So, apologize for that if you see a couple arrows that are the wrong color. So, elementary school belonging. So, do you feel an important part of your school? And so, we are seeing, again, statistically significant growth for some of those focus groups, Black, Latinx, and NHPI, which are focus groups a lot of our schools have been prioritizing through school improvement and through their efforts to improve their school cultures. So, for culture, this is a question that we ask that looks at how students feel like adults in the building, value people from different backgrounds. For example, different races, ethnicities, genders. And so, for our high school, the highest agreement is our white students, who are rating 79%, which is similar to last year. And our LGBTQ students were seeing actually pretty statistically significant growth in how they're experiencing that question. And if we go over to middle school, we're also seeing some gold. So, we're seeing our groups having a better experience in terms of adults recognizing and honoring folks from different backgrounds. So, despite some of the gaps between groups, many groups are showing significant growth from last year. So, for secondary engagement, we asked this student this question, "My teachers' expectations make me want to do my best." So, for this, high school has seen some fluctuation. However, we're seeing our NHPI students having the highest response with 64%, and we're seeing increase over time for Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander in both middle school and high school. I'm able to create my own goals. So, for this one, we like to ask this question because we want to see the extent to which students are starting to feel empowerment. And we've actually seen this be over the national average in the way that our students in this district respond compared to the other Youth Truth schools. But all middle school subgroups showed improvement, which is great, which means that goal-setting and helping our students to start to set their goals is part of what they're experiencing. And we're also seeing LGBTQ students seeing double-digit growth as well since 2022. So, for the next question in the academic challenge, "Most of my teachers don't let people give up when the work gets hard." So, this is really helping us think about the extent to which there is high expectations and a high support. And so, with this question, we see that there has been growth. And again, statistically significant growth is 3%. If you notice, we're seeing three times that and four times that with some of our groups. 10, 12% growth, 10% for our high school Latino, Hispanic, 12% for Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander. So, there are high expectations as well as that high support that are really happening and showing how much the efforts around that are making a difference in the classrooms and how much our teachers are working to provide those high expectations and high support. And then for elementary, same thing. We're seeing growth, 5% for Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander. So, the last question for academic challenge is, "My teachers explain things in a way that I understand." So, we see white students highest at 54% and Black students lowest at 44%. However, we're also seeing growth for our Latino and Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander students again. And in middle school, we're seeing that there's been 11% growth for our Latino, Hispanic students. And I know that there have been a lot of efforts in the multilingual department to have some meaningful access training and supporting educators to be more supportive for students around their academics. And so, I'll highlight, I know there's a lot of numbers, but here are some of the headlines. So, for belonging and culture, we are definitely seeing a significant growth, and we're feeling positive about the fact that students are feeling seen and valued, and particularly seeing that growth within those subgroups when we disaggregate by race for our Black students and Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander students, and also LGBTQ students. For academic challenge, the headline here is that we are going to continue on this path of growing our efforts to hold high expectations and support perseverance because that is the way we want our students to believe that they can do the work even when it's hard, so that when Nathan shares the next part around the actual results with the academic achievement, the belief is there for students and their perseverance. And then, we also are seeing that we might be improving our instructional clarity and our responsiveness, which is why we're seeing growth in middle school for those populations who are multilingual and who have historically had some gaps with academic outcomes. And then, I added this one on as well because it's a question around safety, but we are seeing some growth in how our students are experiencing safety in the classroom. And so, I wanted to name that just as we continue to make efforts to address bias and create environments that are inclusive and safe for all of our students. So, I'm going to hand it off to Nathan because I want to quickly pivot to acknowledge that efforts to improve school climate are intended to improve instructional and student achievement and outcomes. And so, we're hoping that now that we're starting to see this growth with our students' belief in themselves, their sense of belonging, their sense of safety, that we'll also start to see that growth in our academic outcomes as well. So, Nathan, to talk about that.
Good evening. Nathan Lee, Research and Assessment Coordinator, formerly Digital Learning Coordinator, so transitioning to this role this year. And getting into continuing working with data for our students across our district, thinking about assessments, as our students are required to complete assessments, we need to ensure that we're assessing their content knowledge and what they understand versus their understanding of a platform. And so, that's really been an emphasis on using focused interim assessments with Smarter Balance this year because we want to ensure that they understand the vocabulary, the layout of the test questions, how to navigate from question to question, and the types of questions that are being asked so that students can demonstrate what they know in math or in reading. And so, tonight, I'm sharing a little bit about our math interims that we completed in March. And so, the emphasis, again, was on skill and vocabulary practice for fractions, number cents, and alignment with the standards, so making sure that their end-of-year state standards, that they're being assessed on, they've had experience with and exposure to. And then, any manipulatives or tools that students need to use on the Smarter Balance that they've had practice using those tools earlier than the summative assessment. So, it was kind of the overview and the purpose behind doing the math interim in March. We had over 99% of our testing grades work on the interims this year, which was wonderful because this is our first-year district-wide completing interim assessments and practice. We had 78% of our students from third grade and above complete an interim, which means that, again, they're getting that practice, they're using the tools, and they're getting the aligned vocabulary. We have our state summative scores that will be available as of June 1st, and so we'll be able to look at how our interim results, which are on a specific skill, versus our math and ELA summative scores, how those compare, how we can use that to inform our instruction next year. This is a snapshot of for the particular skills on the interims that they completed, where we were as a district, green being above standard at that point in March, at or near, continuing to work on those skills, below, continuing to work on those specific skills. And this can help us continue to support students throughout the year versus waiting until getting the summative results at the end of the year and make some instructional moves throughout the year. So, next year, we're working on a comprehensive assessment system, so really identifying what kind of assessments we're giving, why are we giving them, how do we use the data, and what is the purpose for students in the classroom? Why are they spending their time on the assessments, and what does it mean for their instruction? And how are we supporting them? So, that takes us to empowering staff with data. So, really emphasizing how we're using data as a district, how we're using data as a school, and how we're using it as a PLC team to support students in the classroom. And so, to continue to build, we're looking at two ELA interim assessments and two math interim assessments next year, combining a non-standardized assessment where teachers are using instructional strategies, talking through the questions with students, thinking about how do I solve this problem, what would you do to solve this problem? And then also a standardized so that we can get some progress monitoring data throughout the year to see how students are doing, so we're not just waiting until that end-of-year summative assessment to see how students are progressing and where we can support.
Thank you to Nathan and Jamila. In teaching, learning, and equity, we want to make decisions based on data, on factual information. And as you know, database decision-making is also an important component of the equity-based multi-tiered system of supports I've been sharing with you over the last few months. Educators and teams at all levels of the system use data to help us make decisions. There are different sources of data that we use. This evening, we heard about progress monitoring data from Nathan. Interim assessment data helps us measure rate of growth for individual students and for groupings of students in a school. We also heard about perception data from Jamila. The Youth Truth data is valuable because it also helps us measure progress in ways that are sometimes difficult to quantify, like climate, sense of well-being, and belonging. And we can celebrate growth and try to maintain some momentum in what is going well and evaluate our practices and make adjustments. Using the data is as important as giving the assessments and taking surveys. That's why I highlight that for us all to look at this evening. At your next meeting in June, on June 10th, we will hear from Director of Student Services Kale Pylund, who will share an athletics review for the 24-25 school year. And this concludes the TLE update.
Any questions? Thank you. The next item on our agenda is textbook adoptions.
Is that it? Let's see. So, there's this one, this one.
Yeah, it's that one, yep.
Okay.
Good evening.
Whoops. Just one moment. Not there. Go back. Okay, it got unlinked. Sorry. It's right down here. All right. Thank you. Okay. Good evening, President Weatherspoon and directors. Tonight, we're here to present the proposed adoption of core instructional materials for our high school AP pre-calculus and physics courses. These core materials play a vital role in ensuring equitable learning opportunities and preparing all students for success beyond high school, whether in college, career, or post-secondary paths. Before we dive into the specific materials and the process that we followed, I'd like to highlight key components of our district's Policy and Procedure 2020 that guide this work. Curriculum review committees are formed as needed and are led by content area specialists under the supervision of the superintendents designee, a position I hold as the Director of Curriculum and Instruction. These committees assess the current state of curriculum in each subject area by reviewing the student data, instructional trends, academic standards, and research-based best practices. When the review indicates a need for new materials, the committee may recommend forming an adoption team. So, in this case, the team found that the existing instructional materials were outdated or they needed to be revisited to align with the course's rigor and learning objectives. So, once the adoption process begins, the content area specialist leads a team of professional staff through a structured, criteria-based review of available instructional materials. Any materials recommended must align with the selection criteria and meet the learning standards for the course. In this process, we were fortunate to identify high-quality, open educational resources that are either low-cost or free, helping us to move the adoption process forward efficiently and equitably. The Instructional Materials Committee, or we refer to this as the IMC, is responsible for reviewing those recommendations of the adoption team and bringing forward final proposals to the Board of Directors for approval. The IMC is made up of administrators, teachers, content specialists, community members, and parents of enrolled students, ensuring a balanced and representative review process. The committee evaluates the selection process for the curricular materials to ensure compliance then with Procedure 2020. Tonight, we will hear from two content area specialists, Crystal Wolf and Deanne Morris, on the proposed adoption of new math and science materials. You will have the chance to ask questions about both the materials being proposed and the process that was followed to select them. At the next board meeting, you will have the opportunity to approve both the proposed materials and the selection process used. So, with that, I'm going to invite Deanne Morris.
Good evening, President Weatherspoon and members of the board. I'm Deanne Morris, the Secondary Math TOSA, and as Tilly mentioned, I am here to talk about the AP pre-calculus adoption. I think. Maybe I need to figure out the clicker now. There we go. So, AP pre-calculus is a new course that is going to replace our currently existing non-AP pre-calculus in Evergreen Public Schools. This new course, having the AP designation, provides students an opportunity to earn college credit. We establish the need for new instructional materials because our currently existing pre-calculus textbook for the non-AP version that we offer is outdated. It's a textbook from 1994 and is not relevant anymore. And the College Board requires naming a print or digital textbook for use in AP courses.
Good evening, President Weatherspoon and members of the board. I'm Deanne Morris, the Secondary Math TOSA. And as Tilly mentioned, I am here to talk about the AP pre-calculus adoption. I think, maybe I need to figure out the clicker now. There we go. So AP pre-calculus is a new course that is going to replace our currently existing non-AP pre-calculus in Evergreen Public Schools. This new course, having the AP designation, provides students an opportunity to earn college credit. We established the need for new instructional materials because our currently existing pre-calculus textbook for the non-AP version that we offer is outdated. It's a textbook from 1994 and is not relevant anymore. And the College Board requires naming a print or digital textbook for use in AP courses. Our process actually started last school year when we knew that regardless of whether or not we were going with the AP version of pre-calculus, our curricular resource was very much outdated. And so we looked at some different options that were out there, some for pay, and the print textbooks tend to be quite costly, like upwards of $200 per textbook. We looked at some just to try to get an idea of what's out there. And then this year, once we knew we were proceeding with offering AP pre-calculus, we narrowed down the list of options to three low or no-cost options. And each of those three options that we looked at more deeply are pre-approved by the College Board for use in AP pre-calculus, so we know that they would satisfy part of the AP audit process, which every AP teacher needs to go through. Each of those were rated using the math text rating sheet, which I'll explain in more detail on the next slide, and then we've compiled the scores to determine a recommendation of which resource to move forward with. So the math text rating sheet was developed based on three sources: the EPS Procedure 2020P, which outlines criteria for the adoption of curricular resources; OSP guidance on steps that should be taken to adopt new resources; and the Oregon Instructional Materials Criteria. Washington State does not have like an adoption criteria, so we looked at Oregon's because they have a very clearly laid-out criteria specific to different levels. So they had a specific high school math criteria, which aligns with our Procedure 2020 but is specific to high school math. In that rating sheet, there's 26 criteria grouped in four main categories: alignment and rigor, equity and access, technical usability, and standards and assessment. And by far, the resource with the highest ratings in all of those areas was Mathematic AP Pre-Calculus. This is an online resource. It's fully aligned to the AP Pre-Calculus course and exam description. It's the only one that followed exactly the units of study in AP Pre-Calculus. There's lesson plans available, which align with our instructional vision, with the workshop model that incorporate high-leverage practices and have student-centered experiences where they're making sense of the math as they're doing the math. This resource provides practice problems, reviews, assessments, and those lesson plans. There is a cost, but it's quite minimal compared to traditional print options. It is $225 per teacher per year. This year, we have seven teachers for AP, for our regular pre-calculus, but it varies a little bit from year to year. One place where the mathematic was a little bit lacking is in a student-facing resource, so like the lesson plans in Mathematic are teacher-facing, and then it would depend on the teacher to push out those resources for the in-class experience. So we're also recommending as a supplemental resource that we adopt this online textbook, Pre-Calculus: An Investigation of Functions, that would offer a print resource for students, say if they're absent or want to read a little more about a topic, they have an option at the ready for them. Each chapter is available through a PDF file or editable doc file, and there's no cost for this resource. So that ends my information, but I'll pause now for questions or comments.
Any questions?
No, I'll reserve until we've seen it all.
Thank you.
I think so. There we go. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Crystal Wolf, and I am the District Science TOSA, and I'm here to tell you a little bit more about our high school science program, but also make a recommendation for adoption of our physics curriculum. And so with that, I want to just give a little bit of background because while Deanne's adoption represents more just a single course, the adoption I'm bringing to you today with physics really represents a larger body of work with our high school science sequence. So in 2022, we came together with a district team that included all of our building principals, district leaders, as well as every science teacher in the district, because one of the things that we knew is that in our comprehensive high schools, each high school was, had different pathways and different opportunities. And we knew that we wanted to create a more equitable, comprehensive science progression in our high schools so that all students can experience success. And so through that process, we arrived at ninth grade as our foundational course. And so this is a course that is offered to our freshmen, followed by a 10th-grade biology and 11th-grade chemistry. And so along with that, if students choose to take that three-year progression, they receive all of the high school science standards, including the integration of our environmental and sustainability standards, along with engineering and technology and earth and space science. And so that was a long process to get to that consensus among our different buildings, who had a lot of variety. And so with that, we knew we needed to do some work to shore up those courses and make sure that we had curriculum for them. Along with that, I want to make sure that everybody understands how that sits in the larger offering in our high school science program. And so here you can see just a snapshot of our high school course catalog. You can see along the left-hand side that core science progression. But students also have other options as well. And so in ninth grade, for example, our students, if they are feeling up for a challenge for some more rigor, they have the option of taking AP Physics 1. It's an algebra-based physics course, but it does have that AP designation. And then we also have some CTE electives, science electives, that have that CTE designation as well. And so our equivalent courses in CTE are Physics Through Engineering, Biology, Animal Science, UC Materials Science listed there as well. So we really developed a sequence with a broader picture in mind, that students could have options at each grade level for advanced coursework and also college, career, and technical education. We still have a variety of electives. As you can see down there, I know some of that's a little hard to read, but you can access our high school course catalog to see the rich offerings we have. And then, of course, Henrietta Lacks, our biomedical science and health high school, has some specialized programs there that students select based on their program of study. So with that, starting with that foundational science course, I convened a review team to look at our resources. Our current district provided resource is the textbook you see on the right there, Inspire Science. So this book we started using in 2020, and it does include some earth science, but it's not widely used. And one of the things that the committee really recognized is that that resource has not fully supported us in our shifts to the new science standards. We want science to be more than just memorizing a bunch of science concepts and facts. Science education should really be about developing science skills. So there are eight science and engineering practices that include investigations and analyzing data and arguing from evidence, modeling. And so we went first to send a team to look at OpenSciEd. The state of Washington had a lot of ESAR funds that we put towards educating teachers in some high-quality curriculum, and so a number of our teachers engaged in some workshops there and got really excited about OpenSciEd. Again, open educational resource, it's completely free, though with science, there's always lab equipment that comes along with things. So we looked at that first. And then we also looked at Patterns, which comes out of the Portland Metro area, another engaging phenomena-based curriculum that is also an OER, and it is free as well. So those are the three that the Resource Review Team looked at. When we evaluated them, similar to Deanne's process with following Policy 2020, we also used the EPS Science Adoption Rubric, which, again, we borrowed from the state of Oregon, and there are a number of criteria that fall into several categories. So Criteria 1 is about that alignment, alignment to our science standards, but also not just science facts, but also science skills. Another piece of that criteria is that our units are connected to engaging real science phenomena and that students build their learning over a progression of science learning throughout a unit. Criteria 2 is about engagement, so are we picking real-world topics that students are actually going to be engaged in? Is the science going to speak to all of our students and draw from the rich experiences that they have in their own lives so that they can really see themselves as scientists and have that as part of their student identity? That we can do science, we can build things, we can problem-solve. We also look at technical usability for teachers and for students, and is the product actually usable and adaptable and able for teachers to use? And then we also have assessments so that teachers can, over the course of a unit, really see what students are learning, give feedback to students, and help them to grow. So those were the criteria that we looked at with our three curricula, and Patterns Physics was by far the highest rating. And so you can see a summary of the units that are there. We've been using this curriculum in most of our high schools this year, and we've had some really great data with seeing students actually using the materials, doing the lessons. I believe we have a couple of students that you know personally who have been doing, for example, our climate and power unit, where they are looking at the Washington's energy plan and learning all about science through that lens. In the engineering-as-shoe model, for example, we learn about physics and collisions and momentum, but we're also thinking about clients as a shoe designer to make that real-world and accessible. And so those are the units from Patterns that we're taking a look at. And so we'd like to move forward with, hopefully with your approval, to adopt Patterns Physics for Physics 1-2 as our foundational course for our three-year sequence. We think that that will really help us to actualize our strategic plan, operationalize that. When we have robust scope and sequences and high-quality curriculum, it really supports all of our educators and empowers our students. Any questions?
I do. One of the things that a couple of my kids went through was experiencing the AP, not the AP, the physical science curriculum as eighth graders. Will this curriculum be presented to eighth graders who find themselves in the quote-unquote "advanced" science track and bent on getting basically high school credit while they're in the eighth grade?
Yeah, so if you think back into like the history of EPS science, we did at one time offer a physics course in the eighth grade for high school credit. The current eighth-grade course offering, so we have an integrated approach in our middle school, we have sixth, seventh, and eighth grade integrated science. And then there's an advanced course in the eighth grade as well, but it's environmental science. And so the environmental science course is an option for eighth graders. If they choose to take it and they pass it, they get transcript credit for their high school pathway as well.
Okay.
So we have, we do have a high school offering in the eighth grade, but it's not physics. Yeah.
That's changed since?
That changed in 2020, 2021, around there. Yep. Other questions?
Crystal, two weeks ago at the board workshop, you presented, and I believe there was a cost involved here. It was $25,000, I believe.
Yeah, so I did a little breakdown on the one-pager that you guys have. So while the OER itself, the Open Educational Resource, is free, with implementation, there's always a requirement to train our teachers, right? And so along with that are some associated costs. For science, there's some lab equipment involved, so that's one of the costs. There is a release day that I've planned for before August in service and some release days throughout the year. If you look at the current cost for the textbook we're already providing, it's about $30,000 a year per student. I think it's $23 per student per year is the actual amount. And so about $30,000 a year we've been paying every year, so, you know, five years, it adds up. So this first year of implementation, when I did the cost breakdown, it's a net cost of $5,000, but over the course of even two years, it's a savings for us.
And where, I forget, were any of these courses students receive college credit for?
Physics 1-2 is not a college-bearing credit, but if I go back to the course catalog there, so AP Physics 1, if you pass the AP exam, depending on the college you go to, you may receive college credit. AP Bio, AP Chem, AP Physics, all those AP courses. We also do have some other dual-credit courses, astronomy through UW. We have some of our teachers who've been accepted by UW to be astronomy teachers there. There are a few other options there. So when those opportunities present themselves, those are, I think, really valuable experiences for our students.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Just a comment on both of these adoption proposals is that I'm really pleased to see that we're finding open educational resources that meet the standards and the requirements that we've laid out and the state has laid out for adoption. And I appreciate the efforts that you've made to look in those directions over the last few years and to find things that shouldn't cost all that much because, well, math and science don't change at these levels, not really. I would like to have an opportunity in the coming school year to see how they're being implemented in the classrooms, maybe like in the fall and then again in the spring, just to get a sense of how things are going.
Yeah, seeing the classroom experience with students is really a true measure of how it's going.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So the next item on our agenda is proposal for action. We have our board superintendent relationship policies that we reviewed at a recent workshop. The revisions were presented. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I skipped ahead.
I'd be happy to make that motion.
All right.
I move that we advance the proposed material for the AP Pre-Calculus class consisting of the, let me get that name out again. I can just say as presented by the curriculum folks. So as presented, the materials for AP Pre-Calculus, and advance it to second reading.
Second. Director Perkins moves that we advance the materials as presented for a second reading, seconded by Director Boconegra, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Do we have another one?
Yeah.
I move that we move the Physics 1-2 curriculum adoption to a second reading.
Second.
Director Boconegra moves that we move the physics adoption to a second reading, seconded by Director Perkins, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Sorry that I skipped that step.
All right. Next item on our agenda is our proposal for action. The board reviewed and discussed the board superintendent relationship, BSR 1, 2, and 5 in workshop on April 24th, with revisions presented and approved on a second reading at the May 10 meeting. Director Perkins?
Okay, on the screen, we have both. Well, first, we have the BSR 1 Single Point of Connection policy, and we discussed last time that we had agreed to remove the last phrase of that in order to make the policy clearer. I haven't received any questions from anyone in the public. Have there been any questions at the district level? Okay. So we've already been through this first reading and had our discussion, but if there are other questions, I guess we should make the motion.
Are there any questions from the audience? Board? Is there a motion?
I move that we adopt the revisions to board BSR 1 Single Point of Connection as presented here for adoption.
Second.
Director Perkins moves the board accept the revisions to BSR 1 Single Point of Connection as presented, seconded by Director Boconegra, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. So we have the single, number two?
Now we have number two with a similar revision, removing an unless clause from the text. The superintendent is neither obligated nor expected to follow the directions or instructions of individual members, officers, or committees, and we're removing unless the board has specifically delegated such exercise of authority. From our discussion previously, we could not think of circumstances where we would delegate that kind of authority, especially given the framework of law around open public meetings. And so the proposal last time was to advance to this second reading. And so the proposal last time was to advance to this second reading, the language that you see on the left with the phrase stricken. And I haven't had any questions directed towards me. How about the district?
We have not received any either.
Okay.
Are there any questions in the audience?
I move for approval of BSR Two, Board Superintendent Relationship.
Is there a second?
Second.
Director Boeckenegra moves the board accept the changes as presented for approval, seconded by Director Perkins, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Director Perkins?
Okay, the next one is BSR Five, Superintendent Accountability. And the change that we're, we've discussed making in our first reading and in the workshop before was to, if you're looking at item five, was to strike each May and replace it with the word annually, meaning that we're sort of freeing ourselves from exactly a calendar month for the summative evaluation of the superintendent and saying that we'll do that once a year. This language is probably better, given the contents of the contract we have with the superintendent, and enables us to to do what we have been doing and have that reflected in policy, which is that we do our evaluation and discussions pretty much on an ongoing basis with mid-year review and the final evaluation, which we usually get done in June. So we'd just be changing each May to annually for that. I haven't received any questions from any of the public.
I have not received any either.
Okay.
Are there any questions in the audience? If not, is there a motion?
I'll move adoption of the revisions to BSR Five Superintendent Accountability as we've presented it here. Second.
Director Perkins moves that we accept changes as presented for approval, seconded by Director Wilson, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You post? Motion carries. The next item on our agenda is an informational item, our financial statements from April 2025. Also, we have our clean buildings performance standard investment grade audit phase one for our Evergreen High School boilers. Now we have our good news report. Hello. Mr. Brenbuck.
Missed the button by accident. There we go. There we go. Good evening, President Weatherspoon, Board Director, Superintendent Dr. Maloney. Thanks for having me. I'm just going to hope my computer lasts just long enough. I put a little charge in there. We're going to start, we have plenty of good news. I'm going to start with Marion Elementary School, where they celebrate Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month with a special assembly where they had, I don't know if anyone's ever seen them, I've seen them a couple of times, they're amazing, the renowned Portland Tyco Drum Group, and they came out and performed for the students. The best part, of course, is when they invited some students up to perform with them. So that was a wonderful celebration there. I want to go to BBC Elementary School, if my computer will, where they, May is a little bit different. They're calling it Marathon Month. They have a new initiative called Buster's Marathon Challenge. It's called Buster's Marathon Challenge because they're the Bulldogs and Buster is their mascot. That's actually a new mascot outfit this year, with students actually get in the mascot. That's a cool little aside, but what they're doing there is at recess, there's a different choice, rather than maybe play just basketball or hang out on the jungle gym, they are taking part in Buster's Marathon Challenge. Kids and staff are walking and running the track every day, every Wednesday in May. And the goal is for students to get to 26.2 miles a marathon during the month of May. And they do it by recording their laps in little cards. The cards go in the sheet, it's a, you can watch it on the video. But it's also a perfect example of how we can integrate our strategic plan into almost anything. The blowing free success for all works here because they're invited, they're asked to invite friends or maybe someone that they want to know better to walk or run the track with them. Along the track, there's little signs that say, how many siblings do you have? Do you have any pets? What's your favorite ice cream? Little prompts to help the students get to know each other better, so they walk around and you hear them asking these questions. Well, what ice cream do you like? So a very cool initiative. It's a first-time initiative this year. They were, there will be, as the kids told me, we're getting real medals, like rate of real medal if they make it to 26.2 miles. So that should be wrapping up this month. I want to now move over, you guys talked about it last week, Director Weatherspoon and Director Perkins, that you were part of the the culture parade. So we have great pictures there, but for that, I want to talk about Ellsworth Elementary Schools Family, Culture, and Tradition Event. This event was a great success for them. As you can see from the pictures, people brought in food, they dressed to express their cultures, there was arts and crafts. So a wonderful event there. And I want to end with the Chehalah Middle Schools, I'm not going to end, I have one more thing. Chehalah Middle School Community Mediation Services. You might have seen an article in The Columbian about students studying to become mediators. So students at Chehalah are part of that program, the Community Mediation Services. Jessica McDougal helps train them for two full days. So 23 sixth and seventh graders got to learn and take lessons on how to resolve nonviolent conflicts between their fellow students. At the end, they earn certification as peer mediators, which they'll be able to use in the future to help settle conflicts between students there at Chehalah Middle School. And there's what I had promised, the annual children's cultural parade pictures. Our very talented Aaron Winter Song took these wonderful pictures on a beautiful day out there. And then finally, Dr. Maloney mentioned the art show, some wonderful art right at the library across the way. And Teacher Appreciation Week was May 5th through 9th. Hopefully you guys got to check out our social media. This is one of our campaigns where to honor our teachers, let them know how much we appreciate them. The three of us in communications do a campaign to make sure we get to every single one of our schools so that we can get representation of teachers that are working so hard at each one of our schools. So that is my good news report.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is our board comments. Anyone? Let's go first.
Yeah, I want to thank those that came tonight and spoke. I know two weeks ago at our other board meeting, last board meeting, three people came and shared about theater, and I know we've received some emails. And tonight, 21 people signed up, 20 people spoke. And, you know, I think maybe there's enough concern to maybe look at this again. I know Christine, one of your favorite sayings, I've heard you say a number of times, measure twice, cut once. And, you know, maybe another little survey, it sounds like maybe accidentally, maybe some of the interest waned because they heard it wasn't going to be offered. So maybe the incoming freshmen, maybe one or two question survey might be, you know, are you interested in drama? I know, measure twice, cut once, it was important for me when I was re-siding my house. Had T-111, or excuse me, had LP siding, and you get a sheet of plywood, you want to cut it right, and you definitely want to measure twice, if not maybe three times. And how much more important are our students? So, yeah, that would be my recommendation, but thank you.
I just wanted to say thank you to the students who came out and shared with us tonight and the families who also came and shared. The one question I do have is I would like to hear more information about how forecasting works and just to get a sense of if students are showing up to an open house and they're writing their name on a list, do they think they're forecasting? Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I share that interest, especially given the claims that were presented here that there was a bit of steering away from that or urging to wait and how that was interpreted by the students. I want to learn about the dynamics of what goes on there. I, and I want to make sure when we talk about theater arts or drama in the high schools, where, and we can talk about this later, but whether or not there's a class offered that these students can attend, whether we call it drama or literature in, what did that, the one student call it? Drama and literature. And that's, you know, based on the experience that I have as a student of Mountain View High School's former drama teacher, and I can't remember the name she used when she retired, but she was Ms. D when I was a student there, and the fact that we had a drama and literature class. And she was able to present Shakespeare and actually get us on stage. And so I'm remembering that as the students are talking about their experience with drama-oriented classes. And I think there's, I think there's some work that we could do to better connect student interest with the forecasting process.
Yes, I'm happy to provide some follow-up for the board.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, you know, the sense of belonging that we hear the students have for drama and how that works with our strategic plans, so it really probably warrants another look. I know, growing up, I didn't, in school, I didn't take drama, but our neighborhood, they used to put on plays, and we did it for charity. And it was really for, when I was about from seven to 13 or 14, it really played an important role in my life. And it was a lot of fun, and it kind of kept you connected with your neighborhood. We ended up performing at a nightclub, so it was kind of cool.
I can only echo that. I come from a family, my dad was big into stage performance. He made sure that we studied the arts. In my case, a lot of that was music, but I also got on stage in acting and singing roles outside of school. And so having that experience was as formative as the students are claiming and was as important to me. So I'm kind of mourning the trend downward and hoping that we can make sure that students still feel a sense of belonging, no matter what's being offered, because that kind of thing should be present in your English class and your math class and especially PE. I've got my own sense of that. And I could keep going on like that, but it's just to make sure that people feel safe at school and that they feel welcome and engaged in their interests. We can continue to hear that. I also went to the art show. I was really pleased with Superintendent Maloney's choices for the superintendent award. I was struck by the photography award and the ceramics award specifically. And there was one painting that the colors just popped out of that, and I saw that that was a student who had multiple entries all over the place. And it's nice to see a recognition of those arts as well. So, no, it's not just music. It's also visual art, performing art, and I remain committed to making sure that we get, have as many opportunities for that kind of engagement as we can.
Yeah, I have just a couple of things. I'll start with the boring first. So I went to WSA a couple of weekends ago, and just one thing for us to kind of think about, but we did have a discussion, an agenda item around policy development, model policy development. And really what WSA does is they take legislation and then they form it into a model policy that school districts can or cannot subscribe to and decide if they want to take that model policy, then revise it for themselves to then make sure that we're following state law. So, but there was just some, there are some comments and input about how WSA gets to that point, how they develop that policy, if they just do it straight from the legal counsel that they have at WSA and then from the Attorney General's Office, or if they get input from all the stakeholders. So just something for us to be aware of. I do want to say that President Weatherspoon and myself, we did attend a meeting to start thinking about next year's student board reps, and so we're working on that. As much as we hate to see in a way ago, we have to think about next year. And then I do want to thank the students for coming tonight. I don't think there's gone, a year that has gone by where I haven't attended a production at Heritage High School, and the students are fantastic, the productions are great, and I can see how much the students bond through that experience. And so I just want to thank all of you for coming.
All right. It is 7:37, and the board is going into a recess to sign documents. After the recess concludes, the board will go into an executive session to review the performance of a public employee under RCW 423110G. The start and end times will be announced once the board has finished signing documents and the meeting reconvenes. Thank you.